All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our special meeting for the budget we're going to go over this evening for October 28, 2021 at 3:00 PM here at the McCall Fire Station. Thank you all for joining us. Mr. Bridge will be filling in as our Clerk of Council, so if you would call real please, sir.
All right, Councilman Grimm? Councilman Cobb? Councilman Cook? Mayor Lowry?
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Agelston?
Here.
And then Councilman Robald?
Here.
Okay, just for the record, we do have four present, but we will have Ron, Mr. Cobb, and Mr. Cook here shortly.
Correct. And depending on how long the meeting runs, Mr. Grimm may be here as well. Thank you, sir. And tonight's invocation will be done by Steve, Chief, Chief, Steve Trusty.
My apologies. Father Lord, we thank you for the day and all thy many blessings, and we thank you for this council, Lord, and administration. We pray that you would guide us in your way to do the business of this city the way that you would have to be done in Jesus' name.
In the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Action on minutes, none. Communications, none. State support, none. Comments from members of the public?
Not yet.
Not yet. Area reports, none. Orders is not. Business, 2022 budget discussion. That being said, I'll hand that over to Mr. Bridge and Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public, and soon to be new council member in the back there. And of course, um, so, um, we're here for a annual budget review. So these are just some numbers we had put together for the council, recommendations if they want to keep anything, slides if they want to add anything. This is the final steps in the budget review process. Before we go any further, I just want to give a big hat off to our finance director, who knocked this out of the park here. So since he is our finance director, he will be leading most of the review. We, in this opinion, discuss an area in the finance cover right now. We kind of want to do it in a different format, but kind of want to follow what we did last year instead of going line item by line item by line item by line item. What we'll do is just kind of go through and do subcategories. If you guys have any questions on that, you can refer to the hard copy I gave you. But we also have an itemized list of how the actual appropriation budget will look. So whatever it's actually means, right, so that's looking at the whole thing. And then we have, of course, the line items and the big budget. What we'll do is we'll just start with subcategories, and we'll take it from there. Really, our budget is the same year in and year out, just so you know. The only really major difference we have this year are the mayor's court funds. So you'll see some, I don't know, what is it, 200 or 200? 200 level fund for the mayor's court. You'll also see probably in the fines and court tiers on the general fund, you're going to see an increase in the revenue. Prior to us having mayor's court, it was just for speeding tickets that we got processed through county courts, but since we've been doing it ourselves, we're going to be giving a lot more revenue in that, so we keep that by line item as well. The really only other outlier that we're going to see in this year's budget is a $250 grant match out of the general fund. That is for a $2 million project with how he's trying to get the grant money on, and that is a match for that. Other than that, it's pretty much the same, same budget. So without further ado, we have one of the best finance directors in the region, that's coming from the auditor, so I'm going to let Ms. Harris take it over.
It was also on the internet, too, I saw.
Yeah.
Facebook.
Facebook, it was on Facebook.
Oh, my gosh, it has to be real. Yay! Thank you, Mr. Bridge and council, and anybody else that's with us tonight, Lindsay and our fire department. So, and just to get me warmed up and get started, this budget again, we start out with the duplication of most of the funds from our 2021, and then we have historical. And then we start back in, probably May and June, and we start tweaking the numbers for the 2021. And we have numerous meetings with our management staff on their individual budgets for their inputs. So we've spent a lot of time to try to get it as accurate, but as you know, to guess the $7 million budget, and you don't know everything that comes in. So a lot of these items that we're going to go through, we take it, and it is a not-to-be- taken amount. So anything under that is what we're hoping for, but we need these approvals to say, not receive these line item dollars, and we need your final vote. The, and again, repairs and maintenance is probably one of the main things that we come back with, supplementing something very important. So I'm not concentrating on the revenue part, that's what we work with to make sure that our appropriations that we asked you to approve, that we have the right revenue. We can go over that with questions, but I'm going to start with what the voting part is, which is the appropriations and expenses. So are there any questions as we get started?
Do you guys want to do a quick review of the revenues from the general fund, or you want to go right through the general?
Let's just, yeah, go ahead and do a brief overview of the general fund.
Okay.
Start at the beginning.
We're going to start here with the general fund, and property, and then some tax, and we're estimating $1,200,000, $20,000. Then the next group is all our finished government and land franchise. We're estimating $105,000, $25. These are our assessments, grass and weed and couple incinerators, we're estimating $500. Zoning permits and fees, along with this increase here, you can see is $25,000 for, that is where your mayor's court money, that we're estimating, not knowing on our first year, how many, basically, could be very low, it could be very high. We'll adjust at 40, that's $29,000. And then our cellular and shelter house rentals, they're kind of historically the same. We put 12 and 12 for both, for a total of $24,000. Interest, I wish it was these older numbers back years ago, but we're anticipating about $3,000. So the other is a little bit of a miscellaneous. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you scroll back up to the shelter house real quick? So this is the revenue for the shelter house, right?
That's our estimated for next year.
Would that, would that, which, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter if you change it, but will we possibly have a second shelter house next year? It may bump that up some, right?
Well, it should, but we can't budget for stuff that we don't know for sure.
Right.
So, yeah, so if we, and if getting approved, we can assume we're going to have a little bit, but you also have to assume there's a wash down. So we're going to get doubled the amount of rentals, or we're just going to get some new rental for an old shelter house.
Okay.
But until we know for sure that we're approved for that, we didn't want to budget.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
So we have a little bit of an increase, and maybe, hopefully, that will be more.
Okay.
Interest, we just, miscellaneous, we see $20,000. Water tower program, we received back in, oh, sure.
Hello?
You're over here, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Why don't you sit over here?
You don't have to. You can sit down on the corner. Chief needs some company. He's had a hectic week.
Are we, sorry, we're late.
That's all right.
Just now getting into the general fund revenue too.
You haven't missed a baby three minutes. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. So the other, for the general fund revenue, water tower program reimbursement, this will be the last payment that the water fund was advanced for the water tower maintenance, that they are paying the portion back to the general fund, that's $28,000. So we're looking at $1,480,480 as our number for our estimated general revenue, general fund revenue. Now we get into the expenses.
And just so council knows, when we put these revenues in here, especially with income tax and all that stuff, we actually get what we call a supplement sheet from the county, so they actually dictate what we can put in. If I'm going to speak, you can please do, because it's not like we have line numbers that we just run, and we do have guidance from the county auditor to that.
Okay, so now we're going to start on the preparations for the general fund, and I'm going to put these in categories. The first one being personnel, and that is council wages and the benefits that go along with it, $51,888. That is line item on your ordinance, total.
Father Matt, I keep a little shit.
Mr. Cobb, I printed out a hard copy. Did you also need that?
Do you need the lights on? Because it's hard to see that.
I can't hardly see anybody.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, so now in the categories, we have training, travel, transportation at $3,000.
And I did bump that up, because we'll have some new council members that they want to use, um, sunshine law training, or anything that happens, you know, so.
Great.
Under contractual, it's $8,500 in terms of these items, making up equipment, membership dues, and strategic.
Sure. Okay, well, council, do you have a, mind if Mr. Lindsay asks a question?
On the council retreat, $5,000, most of them were someone, just curious. Were there any reasons to add $5,000 for the retreat somewhere?
There's been talks of it. I don't know if it, I mean, we've been talking about it for a while now. I don't know if it'll happen or not, but I don't see, me personally, I don't see an issue with it being there, because if it's there, it's, we don't, again, we don't use it, it just rolls back in.
I had a thought of wondering on that. Thank you.
This came about due to the fact that council had been talking about the retreat for a number of years. We have not had a retreat where we would sit down and outline the plan for upcoming years, and I believe at that point, council decided it was a good idea. Now, whether that retreat turns out to be two, four-hour sessions at, oh, the, yeah, Quonset Hut, the shelter house here, Lord only knows. Other cities have brought in, I guess the word is facilitators, and those facilitators are nowhere cheap. But I think to keep this city going and put it on the path for which we need to be, that possibly we need to sit down and discuss where we're going, what the outlines are, getting input from each and every councilman.
Fair enough. Mr. Cobb?
I don't know if I'm in the right one or not, but what I'd like to see added here is about a $25,000, $30,000 to hire a part-time college person to serve for grants.
That's a daily operation position that would be up to me. That would be a day-to-day operation position that would be up to me. I only have to go to council for finance director or our law director. But it's something I will consider.
Well, I mean, we're losing grants out there, and you're busy where you can't do it.
We actually get a lot of grants in here.
Pardon?
We do our fair share about obtaining grants. Most of that playground equipment out there is based off of grant money, but as you were saying, it's something I've had in the back of my mind about hiring a grant rider. I just haven't determined if I'm going to do that citywide as a full-time position, or like a part-time position. But we do pretty good at obtaining a lot of grants. Grants are very competitive nowadays, but in order to get grants, you usually got to have some sort of matching fund to go with that. 100% free grants are kind of few and far between anymore nowadays, so it's kind of pointless to have a grant rider if you don't have the grant matching money. So it's something that we'll think about how we're going to put forward down the road. But, yeah, it's definitely on my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, Bridge.
Good question.
Back to you, Ms. Harris.
Okay, back to the general fund, materials and supplies. We have $1,900 in that category. We have no capital for next year, $500 miscellaneous for a total, and the council expenditures, $65,788. Moving on. City manager, okay, here we go. So city manager's wages are $198,502.
Before we go any further, that is not all my salary. I make 83 here. However, I will be approaching you guys before the year end for something else, but a lot of that, about $38,000 of that, is a potential reorg with Mr. Kiko, and moving most of his pay out of some of the other funds we put him in mind. So when you see that increase, it's not, I'm going to go through you guys, $148,000 here, it's a little bit of mine, plus someone else's that we pull out, so.
Training.
Combination.
Okay, training, travel category, $2,500. Under our contractual for the manager, it's $3,650. Under materials and supplies, $4,100. And $3,000 in capital, spent through, $750 in miscellaneous for his department, or the manager's department, $212,500.
So on here, if you look, historically, my fuel cost has been low, just because I very literally put in fuel reimbursement. I, I'm going to be doing that, so we up that to 1,500. I reduced operational supplies, so I kind of did a good job of looking at mine, but if you have any questions on that, we'd like to explain it.
Have you been eating the fuel cost?
Um, I put in, sometimes.
This has been an argument with him for years, and I don't mean that in a bad way.
Oh, no, it hasn't.
I mean, it's like, we told him, put your fuel mileage in, and.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's great that he does it, I mean, it's a nice gesture, but you shouldn't be doing it.
And a lot of the times, it's like, I, by the time I remember to do it, it's four months since the last time I did it, and I can't do it accurately, so.
And that goes for any city employee that's doing any.
Yeah, I trust that with everyone, yeah, put in your mileage.
No other questions? Well, then the next category, that is the finance department. And just like Mr. Bridge said, this wages for the finance department is based on for full-time employees and benefits. Training and transportation is $6,000. Contractual total, $91,500. Most of that is the CCA contracted fee. Office supplies, materials, $12,000. And a lot of the finance department supports most of the supplies in the office. So again, it's a multiple, it's not just my pens and paper, it's everybody in the front office. Capital for the finances, $93,000. Miscellaneous refunds, $66,000. These refunds are now a larger amount than what it used to be, and it consists of the shelter house deposits mainly, that we now take and then refund, so I have to have an expense account to send those back. Also, I can see my notes, any refunds that would be, we have one more tax incentive, which is fab metal, not a big amount. That'll drop to a lot lower, and this is fab metal flying for that, for his tax incentive. Any questions on the finance department?
Have we, I see the medical insurance has jumped up. Have we got a quote from it?
Yeah, we're still waiting on that. We put in a 10% increase, so we should have that soon.
I got mine today, and it's 16% increase.
How much?
16%.
16? So we had a similar thing like that last year, but I told them to take it back out to market, and we can do that, they did again, I guess, and it got a little lower. So depending on what the numbers look like, I'll probably have to go back out and see what they get from it. But, yeah, we're not, we don't know yet.
Moving on.
Okay, next one is the planning department. Wages for the planning department, $134,873, and that is for full-time, any part-time, 30-hour a week. Training travel, they put in a comprehensive plan, which is new this year, and that category then would be $8,000, from training for both the new team members. Under the contractual, $81,500. We are breaking down and making a new fund for the community development. It was included in maintenance of facilities in the first budget, they did not have a place set up at that time, so just breaking, breaking that out a little bit separate.
And if you remember what that one is, that's for us to do various things, but now we're going to repair down some old houses that need to be torn down, if you want to do these great, great, huge improvements, or that, where that bottom line comes down.
Under materials and supplies, $8,000. They upped a little bit in the small tools, minor equipment for items for the retail center. Everything else about the same, a little bit more in fuel. Capital was approved at $15,000 for his capital budget, miscellaneous at $1,500, planning department's total, $248,873. No questions? I'm going to move on to law director. Law director, we just increased a little bit, that's another one, you kind of standard, you don't know what you run into. So we have $70,000 in the law.
But I will note, from when we switched law directors from previous to current, you can see the drop off in yearly kind of spending. So with the prior one, we averaged anywhere from 62 to 100, and with our current, we're down, last year, a full four-year, and we're under 27.
No questions? We'll move on to parks. Park department, wages and benefits, $30,483. That is one prorated person, I believe.
Would that be, so that's just like one person, it's getting divided up between multiples?
Yeah, it's actually a quarter, a quarter of a half of the house. And there's a seasonal physician included in that.
Where's the other half from?
Well, he's all over the place. We have him in water sewer, so he runs the mall, so he gets a little bit of his salary out of every park. Fires, yeah. No. No, we just talked about nothing. There was too many in that particular department, the benefits, anyway.
We'll talk later, definitely. We'll talk later.
Okay. Training, transportation, nothing. Under materials and supplies, $6,850. Capital has $68,000. No debt. Miscellaneous, $1,000. Department, a little less than last year, $140,233. Questions on parks? Special events? Without a lot of input, we duplicated the $5,000 for the Parks and Rec Board we had last year. We upped the fireworks a little bit, because you came in a little higher than what we guessed on last year, so we, what, I think we said 16, so we put it at 18. And we put a little bit more up on the holiday for the import.
So we wanted you guys' input, we're not going to just put a random dollar amount in for your board that you guys report to, that we report to you, mainly your Parks and Rec Board. So that being, you guys' discussion, how many you want to put in there, we can adjust. Even anything really not line item, we wanted your guys' input on. Maybe not so much the employee appreciation part, but, you know, speaking, of course, but we didn't know, like, where do you guys want, how much money you want the Parks and Rec Board to have? I mean, we're not going to make that call.
I, I mean, go ahead, sir.
Has the Parks and Rec had any input on this budget?
No.
So we don't know what they've got planned?
No, they report to you guys, we don't, they don't, we don't manage them, so they would have to come to you guys and tell them what, tell them what they want to do.
It's hard to put a number on it when you don't even have, I mean, they don't have rights.
Yeah.
Or we don't know. Yeah, either way.
That's something we can look at later. I mean, it's out of the general fund, so it has a lot. I mean, the worst they could do is have to do, well, sure, we'll have to do supplemental at some point in time throughout the year, but maybe at the next meeting or two, you guys ask them to come present what they need, and their plans, and kind of, we can put something in there. If you want to keep the five, you want to go up to 10, you want to go up to seven.
I think, I think with five, I mean, since we don't have a history to go off of, and eight, you know, they've had, you know, issues getting organized and members and things. I mean, five's not a lot of money, but it's enough for them to do maybe one small event or some. I think, I think it's good seed, a good seed money start.
Yep.
Sir?
How much have they spent this year with Parks and Rec out of their credit?
Nothing.
Nothing.
In 2020, they couldn't because of COVID, so that was, that was a bad year. And this year, Mr. Lindsay, quite frankly, they had a hard time getting numbers, but I think they're starting to get to quorum, and they will be doing stuff.
Right.
Basically, the five brings from last year is a little bit of a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that is. What do you guys think about the fireworks? Should we beat that up a little bit, do a little bit of a show, or leave it where it is, and work, try to get some private donations, or?
You know, I mean, for, for what we've spent, we've gotten a great show. We haven't had any feedbacks, I mean, not that I've heard, that it was a, that it was too small. I mean, I think it's fine right where it's at, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to a little bit more, if that's what the group wanted to do. I mean, I think if we're getting good feedback, I'd just leave it right there.
Well, we spent 16, should we go up to, I mean, I mean, I don't know how much the cost of services is going to go up in a year.
True.
I was wondering if you, if you heard anything from your vendors of future price increases?
Fireworks?
Nothing.
I'd say the big thing is the supply. I'm assuming a lot of those come from overseas, too.
That assumption would be correct.
Yeah.
Out of the Pacific.
I mean, I'm sure you'll see maybe a little increase, but I think the supply is just going to be the question, if anything.
Yeah, true. Like when there's a one, staying almost.
They run hand in hand, so supplies low, cost low.
True, true, true.
So, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to just making it even 20.
Yeah.
To be honest. Just to have, give us some, because the less times you have to come back and ask for more money.
The better.
The better.
Mr. Cobb?
Huh?
Do you have anything?
No, I'd agree with the 20,000.
Go up to 20, okay.
Sure.
Okay, it's in there.
Did you guys really do motions for that, or how does that work in this kind of setting? I don't know, write it.
Well, you already have it. Oh, no, you just changed it, right? Oh, okay, I was waiting, that doesn't match, okay.
They stay up with you, or, then it'll all be updated.
So want someone to just make a motion?
Yeah.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Noakowski, second by Ms. Agelston, to adjust the fireworks to a $20,000 tab.
Okay, Vice Mayor Cook?
Yeah.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilman Robald?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
Yeah.
And then we have Councilman Agelston?
Yeah.
Councilman Noakowski?
Yeah.
Motion passes, 60.
Are you comfortable with that call in? I mean, even though it's already done now?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, back to you.
General fund lands and buildings. This is a pretty good contractual amount that, basically, everything listed in here, communications, copier, professional services, maintenance. $101,000. Under the materials and supplies, these items, $4,500. Under capital, we have $43,000. If anybody needs reminded on what the capital is, too, I have a tab that we can flip over and tell you what these capital amounts are. That's what we, what you voted on not too long ago, but some of it, you might not remember exactly. Be glad to go through it. Notes and interest for debt, we have $15,000. Miscellaneous at $2,000. Total lands and building, $165,500. Also down from our current year. Here's our new one for mayor's court.
Just a second.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I know we put, what, $15,000 in there for the government center.
That's all down in a different fund, I'll show you.
Okay.
You mean for the saving for the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Got that covered for you. Any other questions on lands and buildings? Mayor's court, brand new. A set of wages, just to have them on the books, but we basically buy the contract, we believe their services are going to be under professional services for the people that'll be running it. Maintenance of facilities, equipment, dues, contractual comes at $17,000.
Thank you.
Materials and supplies at $2,000. $5,000 in the capital, and $1,000 in miscellaneous. Kind of rounded up the same number at $25,000. Again, that one's, that one's just really hard to guess until we get into it, so we'll keep you updated if we need more or less.
Okay.
Next one is miscellaneous in the general fund, training and travel at 500. Communication services, posted. Communication services, postage, auditor fees, state fees, record retention, legal advertising, codified, this pretty much takes everything that's not specified as in this miscellaneous. We have that at ninety-two thousand total. Materials and supplies are four thousand, no capital, no notes, no debt.
We're under, which one are we under again?
This is our miscellaneous.
Okay, mine has a smudge on it, I was just making sure I was reading it.
Oh, sure.
So I see street lighting, would that be, I don't think it is, but would the, would the streetlight posts be under this?
No, it'll be under, I mean, when we do the replacement.
Right, because obviously.
We've been taking.
We might wanna up that number.
Yeah.
We've, we've already taken care of it.
Yeah, it's, we've been taking out a street and then putting back when it turns.
So it's, okay, great, thank you.
And with all the other categories that just fall into the miscellaneous in the general fund.
So one of the things I wanted to talk about, sorry for the pause here, um, do you guys have any need or think you'll have any special elections in twenty-twenty-two? Because so we need to bump that up. Because if you look at eleven thousand number, that was the year that we got billed for the twenty nineteen special election.
Right, I don't see why we would.
Well, do, are we, what is our, what's the idea with the soon to be open to councils, which we're just gonna take applications?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be the.
We have, you know, Jake hasn't even finalized any of that, but has he, new in the company, has he? I'm gonna just keep it as is and see how it rolls throughout the year.
I would.
Keep it back in your mind, you may have to revisit that.
I don't see why we would, but yeah, I mean, you never know.
Sure.
All right, so the total under general fund miscellaneous would be a hundred and six thousand five hundred. Last one is the transfers. Transfers, I always work backwards and make sure that the rest of the fund balances can support themselves, and if not, then we do the transfer from the general fund. Historically, we always do that, and that is down here. This is what you were talking about, Vice Mayor Cook, a transfer from the general fund to put into the future savings for government centers. There's twenty-five thousand you put in this year, so I carried it forward, that is totally up to council. Covered it thinking that it might, if it was one year, it might be two, but.
I think it's a good idea, if we've got the money to start putting money away each year for this. That way, if we ever do get to the point that we can't afford a new government center, the idea of biting the bullet would be a lot easier.
Mr. Cobb?
You're on watch, government center right now.
This is transferring out of the general fund to, to put into the government center savings account.
Now, are we still scheduled on the pool liner, Mr.?
Yes, and we'll get to that, I'll show you.
Bear with me, I'm having trouble seeing this thing.
It's just if I keep doing this, everybody will get like vertigo, so we'll be getting down to that.
No, everything's kind of blurry, I just.
Is it, okay. Any other comments?
So basically, what you're seeing, Mr. Cobb, is just under that twenty-twenty-two, what you see now is just a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the government center. And then you'll have a hundred thousand dollar transfer once you get to the bottom, but other than that, we're not transferring money to the pool like we did last year and years before. There's no transfer to the cemetery, so we reduce how much transfer we can do out of the general fund, so really, you're just looking at the two numbers there.
But that twenty-five thousand just being put aside for the building of a government center, correct?
Yeah, it's going into a different fund, there's like a fund later on down, it's called government center fund, and after that money's sold, it's going separate into an account, no one can touch it other than for a government center. Feel good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
And then this highlighted one here is the new one.
Forgot about that one at the bottom.
Uh, transferred to the water fund if we get the, um, is it a grant?
The, it is a grant, yeah, that's a matching point.
And that's our matching. If we do not get the grant, that comes back out, stays in the fund balance, but if we do, it's, it's held out for, it's a huge wonderful project.
Sir.
How much do you, do you grant for in the year five for?
Um, it's over two million, but what's the, uh?
Two point five million.
It's a ten percent match.
I was just curious, I thought that's where it should have been.
It's engineering, it's engineering for the, for the project.
Thank you.
Total transfers from the general fund this year would be three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that includes that three hundred and sixty. And here are your ending balances. We're estimating that the general fund's gonna begin with one point two million, one million two hundred forty-two thousand five hundred and eleven. That comes from this number, which is the end of this year. This is still our guest estimated numbers when we did this budget this time last year. These will all get updated when we close our books. So traditionally, we always have more revenue than expenses when we work our budget, so this number that carries over to the beginning of twenty-twenty-two should be higher. But this is how we work our budget, we have to use what we have right now available. Our total revenue that we just went over for the general fund would be one point four million. Expenditures at two million, using a little bit of fund balance, brings an estimated ending balance of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand at the end of twenty-twenty-two. And again, that's at, once we get, our books close for twenty-twenty-one. And I put the actual revenue, these, these are our budgets, and they turn into actual when we close the books, and then these numbers will change and they'll get carried over.
Okay.
And historically, to help to see this, historically, we have always, you get this is really high, revenue expense twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, revenues over expense, revenue over expense, we traditionally always have more revenue than expense.
So that number, that number's gonna shoot.
But when we do our budgets, it's almost always more expense than revenue, because we have to cover everything than I need to cover, guess about our revenue, but we watch it. If we ever get short on our revenue, we add back to you and reduce our appropriations.
Can you just, I mean, I know you were just like, can you scroll whatever it is down and back over, I just wanna see the ending, the ending, um, and then scroll left. I just wanna see the ending, yeah, there you go. There you go.
So that was my talking point, because if you look at the history, in twenty-sixteen, we ended with the general fund of five hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
In twenty-twenty, we ended with one point six, almost one point seven thousand dollars. So that shows you in one, two, three, four, five, how much money we've, we've been able to really pad that general fund with.
And this one, historically, will do. And we're on track right now, we, when we give you the monthly budget report, we watch to make sure we're in, in line with what our percentage should be for that month.
Awesome, thank you.
So when you see the revenue report, you'll see a percent collected, then anytime we see anything over a hundred percent, we're going to exceed our revenue projections that we put in there.
And that was pretty detailed for the general fund, the rest are gonna be a little bit smaller, um, we're ready, we can go right into street.
This is just street construction, right?
Yes.
Or does, I mean, does street construction, does that, um, that's not payroll, so that's just the street construction, right?
Well, street construction will have payroll too.
Okay, when you're done, I got a question.
Okay. So our revenue for a street construction is motor vehicle license and state gas tax, we're estimating that at three hundred and twenty thousand. It's not a big increase, it's pretty steady, we're hoping that it will. Miscellaneous income, we threw five thousand dollars in, so we're estimating three hundred and twenty thousand five hundred on the street funds revenue. Under expenditures, wages come in at two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. In that department, training and travel at fifteen hundred. Contractual, sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty. Maintenance of infrastructure is the big one, and Howie, that was for decorative pole replacements, there, I had my notes.
Yeah, normally, we were sitting at like three or five thousand, we bumped it to thirty-one, so we would be able to purchase, get the insurance money, still purchase the poles, not have to come back and reappropriate that insurance money, and yet still do our maintenance of infrastructure for actual street work, or street construction stuff.
And your semi-annual streets, that was new?
Yep.
That's all, that's, that number where it's a lot higher than the. So contractual, again, is sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty. Under the materials and supplies, thirty-four thousand five hundred. Capital is fifty-nine thousand.
Let me go through it, I mean, is that that?
Total for the, um, street construction fund, expense four hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-five dollars.
Is that, um, the wages, one forty, one forty-six, uh? Five-five-two, how many, how many is that, is that for the entire street department?
We will have under street, we have a quarter of Howie, we have three-quarters of Greg's lottery, Dave Coleman's a hundred percent, we have a mechanic position that's open, if it's built, it's included in there and half of Tracy's.
Okay.
So the, they're kind of split out again when you get them doing multiple.
Right.
Jobs, we kind of split them up a little bit.
The question I was gonna, wanted to ask was, and I, I think I've asked, I must have kicked about this before in previous council meetings, is what about entertaining an idea of you guys hiring another employee that could float between? You know, because remember, yeah, I asked you in a meeting, you know, do you need another body in street, or do you need one water, and you said, I don't always need someone in street, there's times where you could use a full person in the street, but maybe not so in water, vice versa, just depending on the season. Would be beneficial, because it seems like you guys are, and I don't mean this in an egg way, but you guys are performing a good job, I mean, when you guys are just slammed with, with weeds or, you know, street repair, whatever it may be, or the water department's busy, to hire a person that you could put between the two departments, or three, whatever, could benefit you year-round. I mean, to me, that seems like a good idea, but I, you know, that's, that would be your, you know, I mean, wouldn't it alleviate, wouldn't that alleviate a little stress off of some of the departments and some of the heavier seasons?
We, we have that taken care of, we have a part-time park, so we're giving you fourteen thousand for this year.
Okay.
For all down, in addition to what you already have. So we, yeah, so when it comes to those day-to-day positions, we have, we take into account that, um, so we, we have that, getting that sort of position, how did someone go around, but all that thirty-six days in these weeks, we're bringing.
Yeah, and that part's been part, but.
So you're saying that you guys are gonna hire a, a person to float between the, the big department?
We'll see what the needs are, but yeah, we will probably get some of this.
Good luck.
Yeah.
It took us a while to get one of our seasonals, it took us almost three months to get them hired.
Are you, I mean, I don't know how far you guys worked on this, are you saying just someone part-time or a full-time, I mean, what do you think?
What I'm saying is, if you guys approve it in the budget, we will handle it from there. As far as those, like, Mr. Cobb asked about that grant writer, if it doesn't fall into a managerial position that council approves, as far as your law director or your finance director, we have the money in there, if you guys approve it, what we'll do is we'll get with Howie, and figure out what his best needs are, but we just need the money in there first. Whether it be a float, or whether it be someone to do garden beds, we don't know, we don't know if they're going to be at that point in time.
Right.
So we may get some new staff in there that could be, have a little bit more expanded skill set than prior guys had, so really need to see how everything comes out, but at the end of the day, we just need the money earmarked in there for us to be able to do that.
What was the amount you said is earmarked for that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand? So do you think it should be higher, say, if, if you guys have your conversations and your admins, and say, we could, you know, Howie was to say, I could use a full-time and break it up between three groups, you would probably need more than fourteen, if that was the case.
Seasonal people can only work X amount of hours according to union contract, and we know how much it takes them, so we can do the math for what we'll do, so how much can a seasonal person like, like, two, eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars?
Fifteen hundred and sixty, I think.
A year or so.
Hours a year.
No, but what I'm saying, and understand that part, I'm saying, what if you decide that you could use one completely full-time person that bounces around, say, waste water in streets?
Full-time would be tough, because we'd have to get benefit package and all that, I'd probably hire two part-time people for the one full-time person for that.
Okay.
If you can get this, why would I hire someone full-time and have to pay thirty, up to thirty thousand a year extra for health insurance when I get to be two part-time people?
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, kinda.
It's cheaper to hire part-time instead of hiring a full-time person.
Right. Um, and then my next question on the same thing, would, I know years back, I know we, I can't remember if it was this exact council, you know, prior to the pandemic, there was talks about the new Christmas decorations for Main Street, would that be in this?
Yeah, it's in there, yeah, Derek's gonna work on that.
Oh, so it's in here?
It, you got some money for this year next year.
Oh, so we'll get to that.
I already went through the planning.
We already went through it.
Yeah, it's in my community development.
Oh, okay, great, all right, thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Fundy. Mr. Kiko, how much salt, how much did you spend in salt last year?
Uh, well, in twenty-twenty, it was. We didn't have to buy any, because we had carryover from nineteen. And, and we had a warm season, so, but typically, we run about four to five thousand a load, which gets us to two hundred ton.
And how much you have on hand right now?
Uh, we've got about three-quarters of a barn, so we're sitting over a hundred ton.
It depends on by what you, what you may need, I mean.
Well, there's some in state highway as well that, that gets split with this.
Any other questions for the street construction fund? State highway. Revenue sources are motor vehicle license, state gas, twenty-six thousand, real consistent. And the expenditures are part of. Contractual will be maintenance of infrastructure, equipment. Contractual will be six thousand. Materials and supplies at six thousand, miscellaneous at none, for a total of twelve. Questions on state highway? Pretty easy one. State permissive tax, a easy one too. Revenue sources, your vehicle permissive tax comes in at sixty-two thousand. Expenditures are part of payroll. And that is. Half of one employee, Tracy, and a quarter of our team, their wages go in that. It's pretty much just an even revenue and an expense. Any questions on permissive tax? Street levy improvement. Revenue sources are real estate taxes, homestead, under thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Expenditures are contractual, one hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred. And capital, miscellaneous, total of a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that, pretty much, we just use a fund balance there. Any questions on street improvement levy? Emergency ambulance capital. Real estate, homestead, revenue source, thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Capital is just saving for capital, we have no capital this year, we're working on rebuilding that fund, we do have auditor fees for three thousand. This account is impending with our audit for some fund balance adjustment. But basically, there's no expenditures other than the auditor fees that we have to pay, and the revenue sources, the, uh, real estate taxes. Any questions on emergency ambulance capital? Ambulance operating. Their ra, um, excuse me, the revenue sources are real estate taxes, homestead rollback. Two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Elizabeth Township contract, and emergency ambulance operations. Seven hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For a total estimated at one million, three thousand four hundred and three dollars for the end of operating. Expenses for the wages. EMT's salary, six hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Training and transportation at three thousand. Their contractual expenditures, a hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty. Materials and supplies at thirty-one thousand. Capital seventy-eight thousand, miscellaneous at a thousand. Capital seventy-eight thousand. Miscellaneous is a thousand. Their expenditures are eight hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And they're building their fund balance up pretty good. You have a question? Any questions with emergency ambulance operating?
Nope.
Fire capital equipment. Revenue source is your real estate taxes again, homestead rollback, fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, very steady. Expenditures for the fire capital, the auditor fees for collecting those, and we are saving for the fire truck. And that is it in that fund. Any questions for fire capital?
I see, sorry, I see that we've been saving for the new fire truck for a few years now. Do you know what that balance is currently?
It will be the two hundred thousand.
Okay.
And we're talking about changing it and kind of pulling it out of, and, and Randy will be talking about setting aside his notes for, but getting it out of the appropriations, because we're really not buying it this year. But it will have two hundred thousand. This fund balance will be two hundred and sixty.
So what I want to talk council about is we've been putting that on the capital improvement plan just to save the money. Um, so we want to kind of split that up, so I want to bring some legislation you guys submitted to get it out. It'll still be in the fund balance, but we don't want to put it in the capital improvement plan because we, we're not capitalizing it. It's not there yet. We don't put it in the capital plan until we have the actual thing to buy it. And then when we put it in there, it does impact our fund balance, so if we need to go get a loan or something like that, and have it in our fund balance, or we need to audit, or get our comp, whatever the case may be, that looks like it's actually expended, but it's not. It's in the savings account, basically. So basically, what we're gonna do is just get it off of the CIP, and we'll amend that. It'll be in there, but just not on our capital improvement plan. So we're actually ready to buy it, um, strong.
Kind of, I'll ask you a question. What kind of price are we looking at? I mean, anywhere from half to three-quarters of mil?
Four hundred to five hundred thou, four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars.
The last time I talked to a salesman, it was in, uh, well, you look at every about four hundred fifty thousand each year. Each year is about a five, four to five percent increase right now.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Can you go back to wages, please?
We haven't got the fire, we haven't got the fire wages yet.
Yeah. We did the ambulance wages.
That does include, what did you submit, the two-dollar raise or a dollar fifty raise to your people?
It raised, it gave a two-dollar raise to our paramedics and two-dollar raise to our EMTs. Uh, bringing the paramedics up to sixteen dollars an hour, EMTs up to fourteen dollars an hour.
Where does that put us according with who we can beat with?
The, what, the area, area that will put us in the ballpark?
In the ballpark?
Still will live.
We'll be probably still a dollar an hour behind.
Are you comparing yourself to Bethel?
Yes.
How many more runs do they do up, across the year? How many, they're a much busier department than that?
Yeah. But on a couple of other departments, we'll be ahead. Uh, just depends on, on where you look at.
But we do have it in there for, for the that you're asking about the wages, Mr. Cobb.
Right, yeah. I mean, we've gotta keep him competitive enough so he doesn't lose any, any more personnel.
There's a lot of administrative staff.
Pardon?
There's a lot of staff that you need to bring the wages up, just to remain competitive.
Yeah, but this man's putting in a lot of time here to take care of what he does and have cover.
He does a fantastic job.
And we don't want to lose Park Chief. He's too good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you on that, a hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. You want else? All right, thank you.
Fire, um, operating is next, and our revenue sources again, real estate taxes, homestead, for two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Expenditures are wages, of course, um, fire and ambulance are kind of prorated, so their wages are for the fire operating, a hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. Training and transportation is at seven thousand. Um, contractual is eighty-one thousand six hundred. Materials and supplies at twenty-three thousand. Capital is a hundred and eighteen. Miscellaneous is one thousand. Federal Department for Fire Operating, three hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And they are, um, doing pretty good on their fund balance this year. I think that's gonna increase, but. Any questions on fire operating?
Nope.
That is good. Clark County Courts, going to be a new fund. We got approval from the state auditors to, to open this up. This revenue will come from the fines for Mayor's Court. I'm kind of new on this. Ten dollars per company. They collect those in their fund.
Oh, that's for your moving violation?
Oh, good. I gotta learn this one. Expenditures are computer software hardware. It's just basically a three hundred dollar revenue, a two hundred dollar estimate expense, but a hundred dollar balance, just to set some numbers. Same with the next one. There are two funds. This one is the Mayor's Court Computerization Fund, with a certain amount of the revenues coming in. This fund estimating around two hundred, and expenditures of a hundred for the computer. Any questions that Randy can answer on the Mayor's Court?
So the state allows us to reimburse ourselves for, for certain things. Um, how these things are funded is by certain types of moving violations. So in State and Mayor's Court in Ohio, if you get a moving violation, we automatically charge you ten dollars more. That extra ten dollars is put into some of these funds. We also have to go and, and, I don't want to worry about those, I'm sorry. We also have to pay the state back for some things that we do that go into Indigent Funds, and then, um, basically, alcohol courses for people who can't afford it themselves. So the state hasn't really dictated out what, what we gotta do. We can't repeat, the fines, because if you guys approve, it spells all that out. And that's, we can review that if you need to. Um, but yes, we'll be able to receive some of these things based off the type of fines that we do collect.
Thank you, sir.
Been a learning experience. I'll make a quick decision for everyone involved.
Any questions? When you're ready.
Okay. Health levy, next fund. Revenue sources are real estate taxes, homestead, sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We pretty much give everything back that we collect to the Clark County Health Department, less the auditor fees of sixty-four thousand. So this fund just usually balances out. Any questions on the health levy? American Rescue Fund, this is our new federal grant that we received this current year, two hundred and ninety-one thousand. We get the other, um, amount probably in June or July of next year, so we book that as revenue, two hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. On the expenditure side, we'll be doing a transfer out, and it goes to the wastewater account. And we'll show you where that money's being used for, what they're purchasing. But that fund balance right now will still have two hundred thousand in that we have not talked about using, and that will be a budget adjustment if we do anything next year, or it'll roll over to the next years. Any questions on the American Rescue Fund?
Yeah, there's something at the door.
So that particular pot of money, council, you know, it is earmarked for certain criteria that the state allows us to spin.
Okay, if no questions, we'll move on to the police levy.
Someone needs help. Cat is stuck in the tree.
You wanna go get it?
No.
We're doing that ladder there.
Police income tax revenue, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand. Expenditures are training and travel, five hundred. Contractual, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that being the contract for the sheriff's department for our deputies.
And that should go up a little bit, but
Okay. Materials and supplies, twenty-four thousand. Capital outlay, seventeen thousand five hundred. And no debt. Miscellaneous at two thousand. Total police levy expenditures, seven hundred and twelve thousand. Any questions on the police levy?
Yeah, I did. I had one. So the difference of one thou, or a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, so that's, I mean, I know we've talked about that a little bit. We're gonna have
See our history here. Looks like seventeen, we actually had more expenditures than revenue. Eighteen, we had more revenue than expense. Nineteen, more revenue than expense. Twenty, twenty was barely but good. So as we get closer again, I think we're gonna be fine. Right now, we're running good. Our contract has been less than what we budgeted.
Okay.
So remember how they budget, they, they, the contract, how they charge us is, is say we got five deputies, they charge us for the full family plan, the whole nine yards. So that is what the contract will exceed. By the time the year is done, we, we, not everyone they have is on a family plan, so we see some savings on that. But that's just how they do the contract. Every year, they just charge us for what, if we have the highest step deputy and the highest weight of insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
But when you look at this stuff, as we move on, we do have that fifth deputy on, on that schedule, so we'll have to watch this fund balance. Um, right now, Major Sack is out. He was on an injury, and they did ask me if I wanted to replace that, not replace him, but I told them to hold off because it's gonna allow us to save some money on that budget for this year, because we have two first-ship deputies. So we still have our first-ship deputy covered. It's not like they're down that thing, but I did, I was kind of, just thin this out a little bit, so we get closer to the year, we'll see how much we got. Um, if they were to say, yeah, we need to have the coverage, I would have another one come in, but right now, of course, it's not getting charged for it.
I could tell you where we're at right now, if that would help. We're under, we're under. We can go, we'll, we'll watch it. Any other questions on police levy?
Is that something council would entertain if they get to where to go back to that fourth deputy opposed to five?
I mean, I think you'd almost not have a choice really, unless you wanted to supplement more
You'd have to supplement others.
out of the general fund.
Yeah.
So that just, it would have to be a heart-to-heart discussion on how you'd wanna handle it.
So we usually get that contract from them in December, because they have to go through their negotiation first, they get that pay rate, and then if it shoots up a lot, we'll bring it, clearly, you guys have a vote on that. But we'll look at that number and do a projection and see how many more years, maybe we can do that, but maybe have to go back off.
General fund retirement. Revenue source, real estate, homestead, and the general fund always supplements as a transfer in, and that takes care of our bond, our debt payments. Which are a hundred and six thousand, and that one stays pretty much. We just supplement what it means. Same with the next one, the Twin Creek Infrastructure Bond. We have a little bit of, um, a little bit of assessments that come in at fourteen thousand five hundred. Um, we chose not to, this current year, do a transfer in from the general fund, and we're letting the fund balance pay its debt. And that is just slowly going down. I think we have like five or six years left on it, and we should be, let's, just let the fund balance pay off.
Can you pull up that, find out when this, one of the, one of the Twin Creeks falls off?
That's what I was getting ready to ask you.
I think you just said five years.
Oh, did you?
Payoff year. What's that, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six? There it is.
I know it's a different fund, but that's twenty-twenty-six. What was the water plant payoff year?
December of that year also?
That'd be a big, big reduction.
Yeah, that's great.
So we've done a really good job, the past councils and this council was trying not to add more debt, and we're actually doing a really good job of paying down the debt that we have. When I took over, we're at a double B, we're at a triple B minus, a triple B minus, but now, which is really good. Our next up, up, is double A. We get to double A, then it opens up a whole other world of great rates and all that stuff, so we're getting there.
Good.
We are getting there, but we don't like to add to that, like us, the more debt we add, it goes against us.
Any questions on the Twin Creeks Fund? Water operating. Revenue sources from our users, and this way is received. We're estimating a million, six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. Going down to the expenditures, wages first, three hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and sixty-four. It'll be terrible for this year. We have training and transportation at thirty-three hundred. Contractual is three hundred and five thousand. The difference is this item, the tower maintenance, used to be, those totals were in our capital. And again, we pulled them out. They're not a capital, they're maintenance, so they'll always stay up here in our operating expenditures. Same dollar amount you spent, just a different place to report it. Under the materials and supplies, a hundred and three thousand. Capital then without that is still a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred. This is where we're transferring that payment back to the general fund that loaned, and it is the last few. Something new that we were trying to do that should have been done years ago, but we didn't have the cap for it, is to transfer a percentage out to the water capital improvement fund. So those kind of capitals should come from the revenue from your enterprise funds. They should take a little bit of that and put it away for your capital, so you're not bringing it in from the general fund or other areas. So, um, we have fifteen thousand in there, and it fits pretty good in the budget. Other expenditures are the desk, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars at the water plant. Miscellaneous at thirty-five hundred. Expenditures are one point one, one million one hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. The ending balance looks low, but we have a lot of money moving over at the end of this year. Or else we can always take out the transfers of the capital to trim it up a little bit.
And I can give you an update on the, that tower maintenance of one hundred and fifteen thousand. I believe it's one or two more years we'll pay that, then that will drop to fifty-eight, and then we'll work on their agreement where it's fifty-eight every year, and then they'll be repainting Scarf Tower in five more years, and then be keeping it up. So that, that number will drop, the maintenance number. Yeah, because right now, we're still paying for the painting four years ago, but once that, once they're recouped all those, then we go down to an annual maintenance fee anywhere between, I think it's forty and fifty-eight thousand for that tower.
What kind of, just, I mean, just a ballpark, I guess. I mean, on the average year, I mean, not, not complete, just, I mean, what kind of money do you spend on the, on the Adams Tower, just on average year?
Uh, Adams is zero right now.
Well, yeah, now, but I mean in the past.
Oh, Adams, there's, the only major expenses you do are, you're supposed to do a washout. Washout, um, every two to three years, inspections every year, and those weren't always be able to be funded. Now, our Scarf Tower gets that every year.
Okay.
What the expense is, I mean, it was originally seven hundred some thousand for the first seven years. So, um, you know, I don't know how they break it down, but our maintenance will go to about fifty, about fifty thousand a year. So that's what it's gonna cost us to maintain Scarf.
Okay. So what you're saying is we should probably look into erecting a new Adams Tower? Is that what you just said? That's what I heard.
Yeah, not at this point. Maybe in the future.
Any other questions for the water fund?
And real quick, too, that two-point-five million that I applied for was to get the lead goose necks out of the old section system, as everybody's aware. Um, if you've been watching the news, the Vandelia, we forgot it, New Bremen, they've already given out about a hundred million of that two-hundred-and-fifty. But we don't know. We still haven't heard anything. I haven't heard anything of any of the Clark County projects, so obviously, you, you all will be updated accordingly.
One more, actually, with you saying that. What about the, I'm trying to see what's in here. The, I know we've talked about it, looking for a new well, well field. Is that, is there any money in for that set aside or?
Some of that Some of that capital can eventually be put towards that. But I had a swap meeting today, which is surface warfare, warfare.
Surface warfare.
Yeah. My Navy day is coming back.
Cause that's something that you wanna look into here sooner than later, right?
Yes. I'm still-
Moving on.
All right, moving on. So we are at wastewater. Revenue sources from the users. Wastewater revenue is 1,28,850. We have revenue coming in for the transfer in from the American Rescue Fund, 90,000 of it. Help supplement the expenditures that you're gonna see below. In the operating wages, 506,825. Training and transportation, 1,750. Contractual, 277,750. Materials and supplies, 40,500. Capital, 115,500. Debt, 168,280. Miscellaneous, 1100. For total expenditures, 1,117,704. And that is under our estimated revenue. And the sewer plant is back on track and doing well. And the increase was so needed. Any questions in the wastewater?
When did that increase go in? I was December 1st, probably?
Last year, right?
Last November, the second one, just is getting ready to be implemented now. And then there's two more, two more years.
When's the new one be reset?
It's, the bill that goes out November 1, I believe, is the new rate.
So when people, like, you guys get reached out by Facebook about bills increasing? That's because the new rate increases?
Yeah, I was just, I-
Usually we have a new rate increase, people will know. They're like, oh, my bill went up. Good question.
Swimming pool. Did I take this one, Mike?
No.
That's good. All right. So revenue for swimming pool, we have concessions, pool memberships, delegates, the, the main service revenue at 81,000. Now, in this next column here, this 105 that I have, is actual. Since the pools closed, I was able to take it from our estimated budget, which was lower than that, and put in the actual. So we can see where the pool's gonna end up. So if you have another really good year, like you did this year, of course, the numbers will go up. But this was about what we budgeted for last year. And I used the same budgeted number. Cause historically, in 2020, we only got 64,000. And then moving to, we got 85. So it's really hard, you know, you never know what the weather's gonna be. So I put in 81,000 as your revenue. An additional miscellaneous, 11,000 for a total of 92,000. We're gonna start there. Expenditures are wages at 52,893. Training and transportation is 500. Contractual, 32,000. Materials and supplies, 27,000. Normal capital is 6,000. A capital safe at the liner is 40. So there's to answer your question, Mr. Cobb. We still have the 240s in here that were approved. So they're in our fund balance. So you still will have 80 by this year, by, I'm sorry, 2022.
But it's in the fund balance, though, right?
It will be in the fund balance.
So we, they will have that, that's spent for 2022 on the pool liner?
I do have just, I do have a message in to find out the update because of the, the whole material issue. I do have a request in for an updated price.
Technically, by the end of 2022, it's in the 2022 budget.
So right now, we have to pay 80,000 for the pool.
We're gonna be paying it ahead of what, cause we're not gonna have our revenue in.
Yeah.
So we'll, we just, but as long as by the end of the year, the revenue came in like we projected, and we paid for the liner, you're okay. You've got 80,000.
And this is the first time in one, two, three, four years it hasn't had a transfer.
Yeah. We did not put the transfer in this year because we had enough from previous years. But we're using up that balance.
And technically speaking, if we end the year with a 78, close it, we back out the 60 transfer was cool. So I had an honest profit of eight.
We had about 70.
What?
Cause that's still what's on balance carried forward. But they had an actual profit this year of like 78.
So if the, right now, if that closes the year, is that funding about 70,000, three, four?
It won't. This is still just budget. I mean, it is some, I'm sorry. We still have 40,000 in there because we did not spend for here. So that 40 is on top of 78. And gave 60 on the transfer. But they had other fund balances in those numbers that were from transfers. Their, their profit and loss that I gave you last month, it was your real for that year. You had definite, on your own without a transfer.
So the, the pool's profit this year is gonna be just shy of eight, of 8,000?
Yeah, I think so.
Which is fantastic. I bet you if you actually got Tip City or you were Springfield, to be honest with you, they, I don't think they'd make any money on the pools.
But they would have to be honest. I don't think the Tip Pool part of the city, is it, no, maybe it's-
Any questions on the-
Sir?
Has the wage difference changed from last year?
Yes, we increased that from last year.
So it comes 50% wages?
Uh-oh.
Think we upped it 4,000 midway?
Yeah, you went up 30, 4800, or 3800 dollars versus last year, 2021.
I think that's too low. What's the minimum wage?
It's going to 9, it's going up 50 cents an hour from 2021 to 80.
9.3?
How many, how many labor hours you have last year, Paul? Did you know that's top of your head?
I know it's going, costs are 36,000 dollars an hour to operate.
How many hours are you open, Mike? Is that 30 to operate for, like, just wage? Or is that across the board through concessions or everything?
Yeah, that's across the board. More of a normal 12-hour day. And if you do more, could be extra.
You're talking about wages. You're not talking about profit.
So how, how many, how many people, how many people are on your staff?
It varies. But to start the day, you start with at least five to two life guards. It's not just a special one.
On your payroll, like, how many, like, total people you got? 20, 30, 25?
Yeah, probably, keep them 20 to 30.
25. And how many, when you're open? Three months out of the year?
90.
So 90?
No, no, it's less than that.
Probably over 90.
60? 74?
74?
Yeah, cause we, we, August, we closed.
Just do 90 times four, I mean, 36,000 dollars.
Yeah, we're open about 74, 74, 75 days.
Give yourself some wiggle room. I mean, you guys increased by 3800 dollars. To do, can you say 36 dollars?
So if you have 25 people, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, your life guards are adjusted by your, your, how many is it? 40 times 9, that's-
More?
36,000 dollars.
Yes.
That's eight, right? How many hours?
Be, it could be 12.
On average, let's say 17.
Yeah.
17, 40.
Yeah.
Make it 50. 40.
What about 42? Are we comfortable with that?
We're at 45 now.
No, adding 4,200 instead of the 30 saves, adding 40, 4,200.
Round it to 50.
Round it to 50.
Yeah, just say round it.
So the new wages will be 57,965. Wages and benefits.
Does that make you more comfortable?
Yeah. The only other number is concerning the concession. I'm running out of, I felt like I ran out of money. It was very, very limited. And it was costing a lot of money. And then it was good.
So you spent 14,000, but you sold a lot.
Right. I, I really cut back on what I was selling.
Well, that, I mean, that wasn't because of year, that was just because the supply wasn't there.
Well, supply had to been there because, I mean, you usually spend around eight to 10, and you spent 14.
I've been telling you before you go, it's in July, to make sure it's staying, I'm not a strong one to stay within my budget. But I was selling so much, I needed to buy more. And I was exceeding my budget. So, and things cost more now than they did last year.
Because look at this number. That's what you brought in. You brought in 32,000 in concessions.
How much you want?
I only have five left.
How much you want?
Oh, okay.
Take it down to zero.
You want three more? I, I've only got five left in the fund balance.
Are you looking to do anything different at the concession next year? Like different foods or different? What's your fund balance now?
Steak and lobster.
You got, you're down to 52. Do you wanna add that, like?
Surf and turf at the pool, steak and lobster.
I'm down.
And see if you've got anything else in any of these other lines to borrow or add. So that brings the materials up to 297. Capital, six-year, pool liner, 40. This one is just 1,000. I got 3,000 left. And I'm done with the deal. Without a transfer. Until we get our budget. Just don't look, it's gonna be better. So I got, most of these are, are real. So I don't have a lot of, we're only, is this good to start out with? Increasing your concession and your wages?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're asking that 3,000, what?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're in the box.
And this one up to 52. You added, how much concession? Two, 17?
18.
17 dollars. And if we're giving a 15, turn on the 32, that's a 50%.
So good. Any other questions for pool? We'll try to sustain without a transfer. And have 80,000 towards the liner.
So I said at, I think, the second last meeting, April, you done phenomenal about pool. Um, Mike, I know you had it, but mostly it's April. It's not taking away from what you put in. But April, thank you so much cause you took in that pool from next to nothing to it being profitable. If you'd asked me that three or four years ago, probably wouldn't have. So whatever you're doing, thank you.
Yeah, big not, seriously, I mean, a big not when it comes to high school kids. They're some good kids.
It's not about what we do, it's about what she does, and who she brings into that pool. She's responsible for the whole. It goes, it says a lot about you and how you manage that pool than anything. So we appreciate that. The city appreciates you. You're welcome.
Sir?
Mr. Picko, how much is that pool liner gonna be? And then two years ago, I thought they had a price of 92,000 on it. And sure, it's gone up in two years.
Now, so I said it right before we started, I have, have a request in for an update because of supply chain issues and price of materials. So I'm just still waiting to hear back.
So have you been thinking of putting that liner in 22? Or are you gonna hold it up for 23?
Uh, it probably just depends on what the price coming back is.
It, it all depends right now.
What am I doing?
Just say yes.
Am I, oh, money?
I don't care what it's worth.
But anyway, my own money.
How would you make it work?
I'm, I'm sure if it comes onto it, and we need to pull some money out, it'll be council's decision. We'll just give them the information, and they can make the determination how they wanna move forward. But you have, you can't, you can't sit there and see the history of the pool and see what it's done the past three to four years. We might have to, it, we're still losing money year in and year out. But it's actually starting to go in the right direction. So it may be worth the investment to see how long that holds up, to be honest with you. But we don't know until we have the-
I agree. I have that question. We need water, so we need that liner.
Sure.
Whatever you did there this year, holy moly.
I think it was, it was some, we fixed a few minor things, but from whatever sun channel people were using today, we did a lot of that.
Well, you have that guy from, I don't know who it was, I wouldn't remember. I think he went in after it was already filmed, did something.
Oh, yeah. We had the fire chief from Bethel come in, he's a diver. And it was a mess on him. But he did. And maybe it worked. It just didn't look like it worked when he installed it. But-
Because after you did it, the pool started overflowing.
It did. It did. I apologize, I forgot all about that.
No, I don't mean in a negative way. I mean, that's a great problem, in my opinion.
No, I forgot all about it overflowing, and we had to actually drain water.
Yeah.
So we don't need the line?
And normally, and normally, at the end of the year, when they shut the pump off, that water, you go by a day later when they shut the pump off, it's down this far. This year, it stayed pretty much right where it was for a week.
There's still a lot of cracks. But yeah, I'm, I'm glad you said that because that guy had called and said, hey, we were worried about mosquitoes. And just for past years, it's one of those things where you drive by it all the time, it's always empty.
Yeah.
And it was-
It just kept holding the water.
Yeah.
Good problem.
If no other questions for the pool, we'll move on to cemetery.
So before she gets into this, during our, when we were going over the budget, the cemetery was going to need about a $50,000 transfer from the general fund. So during further analysis, we realized that in the CIP, we have dump truck in there for 60. So when we were going through the budgetary with Hallie and his department, we did ask Hallie if they can hold off on that dump truck for a year or two. He said he could. So we did go, did take that out. So the cemetery balance would actually have a positive balance. If not, council wants that dump truck back in, we are gonna have to have 60, rather hefty transfer in from the general fund to support the cemetery. So I'll leave it up to council. If you guys wanna go ahead and take that dump truck out, I'll go and get legislation drafted by attorney. But that's the, included on Mondays. Not Mondays, I'm sorry, the first week that we introduced the budget, we can introduce a resolution to go into the CIP. If it needed a dump truck ASAP, that's one thing. But since it can't hold off for a couple of years, like they probably addressed a lot ago, but also it's council decision. How many can you add as due sets?
Well, now, as I say, yeah, we can get through. And also, I'll be doing a rate review again of the cemetery for 2022.
With the additions that we have put in the last couple of years, our fleet is starting to look a little better. What is the age on that dump truck down there now?
It's 21. It's 21 years old.
Oh, I think that's a 2021.
Yeah, no, it's 21. But it rarely leaves that area. It doesn't go out and plow snow like it did in its first five years. It really pretty much just stays on the cemetery grounds and comes out rarely on occasion.
All right. Let me ask another dumb question. I know our regular street dump truck is getting on its last legs. Am I correct?
Um, our big, the 550 is in a similar situation. We, I think we have it in the CIP here in the future. Our big, medium-sized dump truck is still in, in great shape. The big plow truck is one that we have, our big saw truck.
Well, my first thought is, if we've got the money, let's replace it. You know, next year, God forbid, something would happen. Well, I guess I'm looking at the fact that if you've got a unit 21 years old, if we would happen to need it, because from what I understand, we're going to have a pretty rough winter, according to the almanacs and some of the forecasts. And I don't know that even if we order it now-
Yeah, it won't-
We wouldn't get it.
Um, right now, Dodge is not even offering us a- Um, right now, Dodge is not even offering us a new vehicle in a meeting I had a week ago. They're not doing government sales, they're on for a short, for a short minute.
What about Chevy or Ford?
Um, I haven't talked to those guys on the state, but they're all having that issue where they have told their government reps to kind of hold back right now. And they're looking at more, trying to fulfill some of the private, because the fleet, you know, they're, they're saying we got to get some of those out, but fleet, they're getting twenty trucks at a time. They're like, well, we can't give a agency twenty and not give someone else out here a truck.
How often is that truck given, I mean, how much, I mean, daily, I mean, how many, how many hours do they use a week or?
Uh, just only when they dig a grave is the only time it gets, it gets run. Uh, that's an F three-fifty, so it's a one-ton dump.
What does council feel about the city owning that cemetery?
I was gonna, I, I was.
So we can't get it much because it, I mean, that's all about budgets, because that's, maybe at one of the next meetings, maybe next year or something.
Love to discuss that.
Because it is, we have to do a lot to operate something that continually is just not fun to, for.
Well, my question is, if we are not going to operate that cemetery, what are we going to do with it?
Sell it?
I don't think you're going to have a very long list of buyers.
Never know, must look at.
It's a hurt to ask.
It hurts to ask. At the end of the day, it's a business for someone who specializes in cemeteries. Yeah.
Well, looking at what Inglewood has run into over there with the, the one west of Inglewood, the one west of Trotwood on thirty-five. And from what I'm hearing from the state on cemeteries, it's not a pleasant discussion.
It's a, it's a unique operation down there for sure.
How many acres do you have to grow?
Uh, we have five that, that is not plotted yet, or we just started in a portion of it, but we have five. It's that lower part in behind RD holder.
But after we, after we use that.
Five, we are, we, we would go into using perpetual care to maintain it, it would then shut down and you would use what perpetual care? And you wouldn't be getting it mode weekly, yeah.
Did you, Mr. God, have something? No, I thought, I saw your hand lift.
Oh, says council, do we come to the conclusion of the dump truck?
I would say yes.
I, I recommend it, I mean, we easily got a year or two, it's not falling to the ground.
Well, with the standpoint of the fact we, we'd be a year out getting it, we're not going to gain anything by ordering one.
Hopefully, the market turns in a year and, you know, industry's.
It has heat, right? It's got heat?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And a floorboard?
Floorboard?
Yeah.
We can laugh at it now.
Yeah, we can, that was two years ago.
We can laugh at it now. Hold on, I'm going to draft the motion here.
Now I heard there's a velourium over on Quonbaker.
Yeah, I heard.
Put a dump body on it?
Huh?
Put a dump body on it? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to have the city manager draft legislation to remove the dump truck from the cemetery CIP.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Vice Mayor with motion and we'll go with Mr. Roadwall, your second.
Mayor Lowry.
What, oh, yes, I thought you were like asking a question of.
No, I'm like, see, I got to start the vote, but I think I.
I thought you didn't hear what I had said, that's why, sorry.
Sorry, misled you with my pen cap. Councilwoman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Agelston?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
Yeah.
Um, may, uh, Councilman Roadwall?
Yes.
And then Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Love being a council.
No, you don't.
I do, it's very confusing. Okay, so that motion passed six to zero and thank you. All right.
Hey, moving on from the cemetery, waterworks capital improvement. That is where we were tentatively wanting to take fifteen thousand out of the water operating and put in the water treatment upgrades. And if the capital increases, the cemetery account will hold it. Also, seven percent of the consumer charges go in here for a total of twenty thousand, just kind of bump it up a little bit. Expenditures, there's thirty-five hundred in a capital purchase, which leaves a fund balance in at thirty-six thousand. Waterworks capital improvement. Any questions on? Next one is wastewater capital improvement, and I don't think there's anything on that, that's why I did that, there's nothing on that one, just has a balance in the fund. Cemetery perpetual care. Sale of lots, we trend, thousand dollars goes in, so the portion of our lots go into the perpetual care and a little bit of our interest from our investments by auditoriums go in there. For twelve hundred dollars estimated revenue. Operational supplies, the flowers, I take it every year. For a thousand dollars expense. And the fund balance is a little over, almost a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars in the perpetual care. Any questions on that one? Street lighting. Street lighting assessments coming at ninety-eight thousand for our revenue. Expenditures are the cost to light the streets and the auditorium fees. Hundred and three thousand, eight hundred. Fund balance usually stays pretty low, means about what we have, fifty thousand. Any questions on the street lighting assessments? Government center. Twenty-five thousand, oh, sorry.
All right. Um, with us switching over to LEDs, do you think that's going to impact the streetlight cost?
No, when you came up, you did, I thought so too, but it really was minor, to be honest with you. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it was, I was shocked too, but it wasn't, it was a two bucks of a saving.
I think you plugged some of this installation cost offset some of the savings for a little while.
Yeah. They did, they, we only take ten thousand for that?
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's so much better.
Yeah, we've got a lot of problems with feedback.
Right, just this open maybe. When I first put it in, it was like, wow.
Yeah.
Government center. Transfer in revenue source, twenty-five thousand from the general fund, fifty poles in this account. Since there are no expenditures, it carried over a dollar somewhat, way down years ago, there was a dollar in that account, so that brought over. This year, we put twenty-five thousand, we're asking to put another twenty-five for this year, we're going to bring fifty thousand dollars in that fund balance.
Awesome.
In another account, but we have nothing on it, yeah. Wastewater equipment replacement, this is the capital fund, a portion of our tap-in fees go in, sixty-five hundred. And there is equipment rehabilitation out of the wastewater for ten thousand. And that would use up that revenue coming in. Any questions on that capital? I think we're just down to a little one, but I think that might be it. Yep, that's our balance. We went through it all, so any other questions?
Did you, was there something to go over when I asked about the extra, I mean, I know you said you addressed it, the streetlights and new poles extras?
Oh, yeah, so we did put extra money in, as you saw, that thirty-one thousand. The light at CVS should be put up within the next couple of weeks, capital will be out, one of our spares. The other spare will go up in front of Abe's Hidden Treasures, so we'll be out of spares. And then now we'll be about sixteen plus weeks out on getting the other two and spares, yes.
So we're going to order, maybe what, maybe four or five?
Yeah, there'll be two replacements, everything will be in, so in about twenty weeks, it seems like forever, we will be sitting at two spares and everything installed.
As long as nothing else happens.
Oh, yeah, as long as nothing else happens.
All right.
You know how quick it happens, Steve.
All right, council, any questions for Ms. Harris, Mr. Bridge, or the rest of the crew?
And we're all open ears, if you guys ever think about positions you want to add, just come talk to us. So when I was talking about the earlier view, Mr. Cobb and you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just, we're just trying to move our form of government in a way that operates. I don't want to come across as negative or anything, but we are where we position. As long as we get that budgeted for, we'll get with Howie and find out what we want to start. So just to clear that up, those day-to-day positions we'll take care of, we're just trying to get, move it, move the city into a direction where our former government is. You guys have always been great to work with, but we don't want to earmark ourselves to say it's going to be this position because of the need they're facing. But as long as we have the money there that you guys approve, we're, we're probably going to hire for it.
Any, any applications for the soon to be opened, uh?
I have nothing to do with that position, but yeah, I'm sure we have some Sunday interviews start tomorrow, right?
Any other discussion? Uh, just a big thank you from Ms. Harris, Bridge, Mr. Kiko, Mr. Hutch, Chief, thank you, you guys are awesome.
Oh.
Did you have something else, Randy, before he motions?
No, no, I remember I was.
Motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Roadwall, second, on Ms. Agelston for adjournment.
Our, um, we'll just start with Vice Mayor. Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Ro, Councilman Cook, Cobb?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Roadwall?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Agelston.
Yes.
We are adjourned at four forty-two.
Thank you very much.